Testing. I know, good old Bill, it looks like.
Can hear you Blake, it's Wendy, can hear.
Oh, sorry Wendy, I just muted everybody. Can you mute yourself again?
I was just verifying that I can hear you Blake.
Beautiful, thanks Wendy.
You're welcome.
I'm here too.
Yay, thanks Dustin.
Yep, I can hear you too.
And you hear Karen O'Quinn?
Alright.
We got it, okay, that's enough everybody. Thank you, she willikers.
Alright, on that note. Alright, on that note, it is February 6, 2025, it is 6:05 PM and I'll bring this meeting of the Dunsmere City Council into order. If you all stand for the flag.
And one nation indivisible with.
Alright. Alright. For that we'll do a roll call.
Member Hubbard?
Here.
Councilmember Lucchese? Councilmember Sebring?
Here.
Councilmember Brian?
Uh, councilmember Brian has an excused absence tonight.
Thank you Mayor, and Mayor Clarno?
Here.
Alright, um, with that, we will move on to special presentations and announcements, which we have none, so we'll move on to public comment. This is a time for any member of the public comment who arrests, who wishes to address the city council on public business or on city business to do so. Everyone will have three minutes, I'll give a 30 second warning when your time is almost up. If you can, please state your name and address for the record. And if you do have anything for items number 10 or 11, which is old business and new business. I do ask that you hold your public comment till that time, as there will be dedicated public comment for those specific items. Um, and with that, uh, we will open up public comment. If you do wish to do public comment on Zoom, please go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. Alright. Seeing no public comment this evening, oh, there we go, well, that's a thumbs up and a clap. So, the specific reaction we're looking for is raise your hand, I'll give you like 10 seconds to switch it over to raise your hand, if you want to make a public comment.
Uh, Mayor Clarno, I can verify that Ms. O'Quinn would like to make a public comment.
Okay, thank you Wendy, and whoever A is, so, um, we'll start with, uh, Ms. O'Quinn and then we'll move on to A after that.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. I would just like to comment, first of all, thank you for being there in this weather. Uh, I never made it to work today, but, uh, we appreciate that you're all there, and not all of you, but almost all of you. Um, I made a few phone calls, uh, during the week and again today because our roof is leaking again. Uh, we have three new leaks in our bookstore area. Our restoration man, Bob Wellborn, has been in. And a public works man, Robert, has put a tarp over the three leaks, held down with sandbags. I'm just wondering, um, I know the roofer gave a guarantee of five or 10 years according to Dennis, which is why the city council went with that roofer. And I know because of the weather, he probably hasn't been able to get up here to Dunsmere, but I am so paranoid that we're going to start this whole process over again where we had super serious leaks, um, in November, December, and the beginning of January. We just can't close the library for that long. And of course, the, uh, county really doesn't have much to do with it because the city owns the building. So I just want to bring it to the city council's attention, that although we have a new roof, we're still having issues.
Alright, thank you very much, um, for bringing that to the council's attention.
Yes, and I'm just wondering when, um, what the plan of action is for the future.
Uh, we'll address that once we get to council and staff comments.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, or Mayor, sorry.
Alright, Alan, if you'd like to go ahead and, uh, make your comment, you should be unmuted.
Good evening, council members, thank you guys for your time today. My name is Alan Magania and I am at 4116 Pine Street. I'm the owner of Al's Depot and Emporium, a licensed cannabis dispensary in Dunsmere. I'm here tonight to discuss a proposal to utilize the adjacent space next to my dispensary. This space would serve as a cannabis free lounge where adults 21 can gather, socialize, and participate in various activities. Imagine a welcoming environment where people can come together to practice yoga in the morning, challenge friends to board games or Super Mario Kart tournaments in the evening, or embark on thrilling adventures through Dungeons and Dragons. The goal is to create a community-driven space that promotes social connection, wellness, and fun. This lounge would operate within the existing regulations and guidelines set by the city. To move forward, I respectfully request written approval and how to go about that to utilize this space for its intended purpose. I understand this may require zoning verification to ensure compliance with local land use regulations, a special use permit, or a conditional use application, a business license, or a necessary permit to be in compliance with local health and safety regulations. I'm willing to work closely with the city staff to ensure that all necessary steps are taken, that this project aligns with the city's goals and objectives. I believe this concept aligns with the values of Dunsmere and would contribute positively to our community. Thank you for considering my proposal, I'm open to any questions and look forward to working together, thank you guys so much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, is there any other further public comment this evening? Alright, seeing none, I will close public comment, um, for this evening. Alright, and with that, we'll move on to council and staff comments, unfortunately, the sheriff's department is quite busy today with a whole bunch of people stuck around, uh, the county, uh, on various roads trying to bypass the freeway, so they are not here tonight, so we will start with, uh, City Manager Reeve.
Good evening, council, I also, uh, took the liberty to try and make it home early before all the chaos and I made it safely, but it took me over an hour. Um, so, over the last week, we've been, uh, I'll address the library leak first, so, um, to answer Karen's question, so yes, the river was supposed to show up. Um, obviously, the weather, they, uh, they had to, they got turned around and did not make it, so, um, they've been in contact with us and we'll try and get them up as soon as we can, uh, this afternoon, the freeway was closed again, so, um, hopefully, early next week. I know it's frustrating, um, as you can imagine, um, we've been, you know, Robert and has been just there with Bob and trying to figure out, you know, the leaks and where they're at, and we're getting the roofers that, you know, they guaranteed their work and they promise they're gonna come up and check it out, so, um, they'll be here, um, hopefully next week and we can, once it stops. It's raining a little bit, so, and snowing. Um, we, uh, been doing some tree removal, um, obviously, tonight, they are doing snow, snow removal, that'll probably work until 7:00, 7:30 tonight, be back in at 4:00 AM in the morning, uh, or 5:00, depending on if it continues to snow, I know it's still snowing here in, uh, Lake Chastina, so I'm not sure what it's doing there right now. Um, and then, um, Aggie, uh, came in from, uh, uh, accessible HR, she met with all the staff, um, last week, I think it was last week, yeah, last week, and, uh, she was here for two days and we had a good, you know, good opportunity for staff to meet her, have some one-on-ones, just have some good overall discussion, and so that's um, kind of helped to, to open that, uh, you know, confidence that, you know, she's able to, uh, be there for them when they need it. Um, and then, as for the consumption lounge, um, as, uh, as Alan was proposing, um, as I believe I have cannabis, uh, yeah, cannabis ordinance revision is in, uh, future agenda items, and so, um, that does require us to revise our cannabis ordinance, um, and it is on our list, and, uh, I look forward to talking to Alan about that, so.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, with that move, we'll move on to council comments, and we'll start today with Councilmember Lucchese.
I do not have any comments.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Hubbard?
No comments here.
Vice Mayor Sebring?
I have no comments at this time.
Alright, and I just want to, um, tell everyone to make sure that they say safe dur, safe during this weather, um, try to stay off the freeway, it's been pretty, pretty gnarly, coming back, I know there's been a few incidents of people getting, uh, delayed on the freeway, and we did have one, uh, major accident right above, uh, right above town, uh, so, that's pretty much all I've got for this evening. Um, and so with that, we'll move on to the committee reports, of which we have none.
We do.
We do?
We do.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Uh, we have the airport committee met, uh, last week to discuss the upcoming projects, unfortunately, the, I believe the Thursday that we met was after the Tuesday, where we all heard that our federal funding could be potentially frozen, is frozen, might not be frozen. Um, so the Federal Aviation Administration dollars, um, are kind of up in the air, for lack of a better phrase, and I realize what I just did. Um, and, uh, so we ended up meeting on a couple of future projects, uh, some that are gonna come back to the city council for consideration. One is the well project that is immediately adjacent to the airport, which would be part of the utilities discussion with the airport. Um, putting, uh, count, the city manager Reeve is putting together that information for a future council agenda item, and then we discussed upcoming projects. Um, so the taxiway expansion and improvement is the next large-scale project on our airport plan, but there is also a discussion in to whether we want to expend funds on repairing roofs, four-hangers, or other type of minor improvements. Um, and so we just kind of went through a couple of different kind of minor projects that could come before council for consideration.
Alright, thank you. Great, and then, I believe, yeah, we haven't had a finance committee meeting, but there is one, I believe, coming up next week, or is it the following week? I'll ask the chair of the finance committee that. Alright, uh, with that, we'll move on to item number seven, approval of the minutes, uh, for January 16th, 2025.
Motion to approve minutes as submitted. For January 16th, 2025.
I will second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, um, just for the public's awareness, uh, since this is not an illness-related uh, absence, um, councilmember Hubbard will be abstaining from all votes this evening, uh, since he is not present, uh, he is here, so that way he can, potentially be involved in any discussion and, uh, maintain awareness of everything that's happening at the meeting, uh, so with that, uh, it's approved. And we'll move on to the consent agenda, which today consists of two items, the check register for 111 through 130 of 2025, and item number B, add newly-elected city treasurer as a signer for local agency investment fund resolution 2025 dash 03.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda as submitted.
I will second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda approved, we have no public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to item number 10, old business, uh, we have two items this evening, we'll start with A, proposed creation of ad hoc committee to analyze role or need for his, a historic district committee or delegates. Since you weren't here for the last meeting, I'll just, you're aware, yep. I know you're aware of the issue, but the other thing that I'm not sure if, um, you are aware of, is the one thing, or one thing that we are discussing right now, along with this, I know we've discussed it in previous meetings, but we talked about it a lot at the last meeting, is, um, the business improvement district and how that would, um, potentially interface with the historic district and whether or not we transition from one to the other, or just not do the historic district and go straight to the business improvement district. And I know, um, the me, members of the council last time had wanted to get your input on this, as we felt you may have additional knowledge as well. I also know, without Matthew here tonight, I will probably move to table this item, uh, so we can have the full council discuss this at a future point, but with that, we'll lead off to City Manager Reeve.
Yeah, so since the last meeting, um, on the 16th, when it was tabled, um, they, in the meeting, we were made aware of the previous, uh, time it was proposed, was back in, uh, January of 2021, so about four years ago, I pulled that, um, that, uh, agenda item forward and placed as a part of the packet for, uh, the public's, uh, view, um, also, we've had a, a situation change, um, is, uh, you know, uh, uh, planning commissioner, uh, Stephen Decatur has recently moved out of the city limits, and so, um, his seat will now be open. Um, so we're short on the planning commission now by two people, and we're also short one on the finance committee, um, and so we're, uh, we're having some challenges just trying to fill, fill committee seats, so we're working on, uh, um, I'm gonna work on a, kind of a little more robust, uh, plan to hopefully get some applicants, um, an update on the, on the P bid, um, so, there's been some, uh, renewed interest, um, with the travelers just recently selling, I've been in contact with that, uh, property owner, and, uh, quite a bit, and, uh, you know, he's getting ready to, uh, redevelop that property, and he's very interested in it, and that's kind of garnered some additional interest in downtown. Um, I've spoke with, um, met with Cosmont on, uh, in our kind of downtown, um, revitalization group that we're kind of moving forward some items, uh, based on, uh, council's, uh, discussion on, uh, the downtown revitalization plan, which one of those items is right after this, but, um, in that discussion, um, we're, we're gonna, uh, have a discussion with Civitas, and then kind of engage them, see what that looks like, and then, uh, you know, I'll probably come back before the council. You know, and I, in my recommendations, I kind of was, I'm kind of leaning towards, let's, let's table this for a couple months, as I have some, just some things that are developing. I need to process, uh, you know, what does it look like if, if we do have to fill all these board positions, and then how much es, extra staffing is that gonna take, or staff time? And where, if we have capacity limits, what are they, and how do we, uh, how do we overcome those? Um, additionally, you know, the P bid is kind of just in the initial conversation, and we hope to have a stakeholder meeting between now and April, and so I'm kind of hoping to like, move that along and get a better idea of where we're at from the downtown standpoint, and then, um, so, you know, it may be something where I, I mean, my consideration was, do we just establish an ad hoc committee of myself and two council members where we can, we can, I can bounce these ideas off with them and, and go in and, and have these discussions with these stakeholder groups, so we can have a better comprehensive understanding of what's, all the moving parts are going on right now, and if it does make sense for us to move forward with a historic committee or to leave it as it is. And so, I'm open for any questions.
Questions?
I don't have any questions.
Alright, um, that, and once there are any questions, I will open this item up to public comment, same rules as before, three minutes. Uh, 30 second warning when your time is almost up, for those of you who are on Zoom, please raise your hand to signify you'd like to speak. Uh, and with that, I will, oh, and please limit, uh, any public comment, uh, to this particular item. Uh, with that, I do see that we have, uh, someone who'd like to speak, so, uh, you should be good to go.
Hi, is that someone me, Allison?
That someone is you.
Okay, hello, good evening, Allison Lyshevsky, 5334 River Avenue. It just seems like with this discussion, uh, folks here have become experts at kicking the can down the road. Uh, for those of us that have been here long enough, we know that we don't need another committee. Months of delay, for what? Are, is the committee gonna get together and say we need to do another community survey? We've done these several times, we have the report in front of us. Councilmembers, please open your eyes to what is going on here, it's very transparent, we need a plan of action. I speak here for myself, I speak here for the frustrations of Peter Arth, who would say the same thing if he were here. And all of us, what is the plan? Wait several months for another committee? We've done this, look at the years that are here on these documents, 2020, 2021, 2022. An entire Cosmont report right in front of us with answers of what we need to do. Please, council, open your eyes as to what you are seeing here. Stop this kicking the can down the road, please take action, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Alan, you are good to go.
Uh, my name is Alan Magania, 4116 Pine Street, as a business down in the historic district, and, you know, part of the fabric of what's happening downtown, I would like to be part of whatever might happen in regards to the committees, I feel with what Ms. Allison reiterated, and with Peter, uh, we need to figure that out, and more committees, and kicking it down the can per se is not the way that we need to do this, so as someone who is of vested interest in the downtown committee, or in the downtown, uh, business aspects, I want to be as much of part of that as I can, and if you guys, like you were reiterating, um, you, the staff is having a hard time feeling planning commission, um, positions already, we don't need more commissions, we need people that are already in the business district down here to be part of that, and whatever it is that the city needs us to do, I am willing to cooperate with you guys in every aspect, so then we don't continue keep kicking the can down. Uh, and, you know, like what Peter was saying, uh, there's plenty of committees that have already been trying to do this. I just want to be part of the committee, I can do it, you guys are super busy, how can I make it to where the downtown Dunsmere revitalization program, or just the commerce gets picked up? Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Is there any other further public comment this evening? Alright, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. And move into council discussion. I can start, um.
To the other end, to the other person who's newer, and allowing them a chance to go first.
So one thing I'd like to just say here for a second is, um, specifically on the answer of the downtown revitalization plan, and kicking the can down the road, I am happy that we are finally taking some action on that, uh, mainly with the next item on the agenda. This particular item is more for restarting a separate, or restarting a committee that has existed in the past, and actually ran, and one reason there's a discussion on this particular item is it is fairly separate from the, uh, downtown revitalization plan. It can be part of it, and that's a big part of it, is whether it would be more effective as in its previous form, or in the business improvement district, or as the committee, um, but just in a slightly different form, one problem is that when we did have the historic district committee and it was active in the past, members of those committees actually came, or actually, um, caused stuff to not happen in town, and it actually caused, um, a lot of friction with the downtown businesses. And the last thing we want to do is create another, or is create a committee. And the last thing we want to do is create another, or is create a committee that would cause friction with the downtown businesses versus creating something that will allow the downtown businesses to grow, to thrive and to facilitate growth, not inhibit it. I just wanted to address that little piece of public or that public comment a little bit. Unfortunately, on the next item, there will be some, we will be talking about action on the downtown revitalization plan. And I also wanted to get a pick council member Lukasey's brain a little bit about any knowledge she has regarding business improvement districts and how they've been implemented in other places.
Yeah, I think, and again, this, this item really gets convoluted a lot because we are discussing the Historic District and then also the, the topic of a P bid, which is a public business improvement district or private kind of public-private partnership if it wants to be. Those are two separate things for people to understand. A historic district is linked to state and federal regulation. It requires people to maintain certain architectural aspects or historic aspects of their building. It doesn't, a historic district doesn't necessarily like concern itself with improvements or sidewalks or programming or special events. That's usually what a business improvement district does. And so I think we've kind of danced around that topic for a long time, and I think that's like kind of the chief concern there. I think my, my leaning is more towards a feasibility study for the downtown of a, a public improvement district. The thing with a business improvement district is that the city cannot just institute one. It has to be voted on. And there's two different types of districts that you can do. And there are requirements for different ones, but for the most part, if you're going to be creating a district, all of the property owners basically get one vote, whether they want to be in the district or not. And so it can be really difficult if people aren't on the same page of what the district is going to do. They don't want to vote for that district because they have to pay into it. And so they're self-assessing. And so there is a, for example, there's a parking improvement district in Mount Shasta that requires business owners to pay into that is linked to providing adequate parking in their downtown area. Now that has evolved into a different type of district for them over time. But that's an example of kind of a special assessment district, and that's what a business improvement district is. It's just a special assessment. And so those can have whatever purview the district agrees to do. And so if they want it to be historic oriented, where it's paying for facade improvements or historic tours or sidewalk improvements, things like that, it can do that. It just has to be in the formation documents as like an eligible cost or an eligible program that's related to that district. I think, you know, I think really what needs to happen is we need to finally get a proposal of what the business owners would like. It can do snow improvements. It can do landscaping. Lads are a very specific type of district, which is a landscaping lighting assessment district, which is street trees and street lighting or, you know, landscaping. So that being said, it can be anything, really. Anything is an eligible cost as long as the people within the district, 50% plus one or 66% plus one between the two districts, whichever one you choose. Doesn't really matter which one. It has different requirements. But I think really what needs to happen is we do need to set something up. You know, I agree with the sentiment that committees don't do anything unless you have staff to help them or you give them funding to do the things they're meant to do. Creating another committee, I don't think it's going to necessarily get us to where I think we should be going. That being said, I think the, the next item is, is a little bit more pertinent. But what I would, what I would like to see is I would like to see a proposal by either hiring a professional to do the district assembly because the district assembly does do a lot of public outreach that is very technical. The professional has to also kind of go through the formation documents, which I don't think we have the staff depth to do that. And so I think, you know, I would more want to see a request for proposal for a professional firm to go out and do the, the feasibility study. You know, the Cosmont report is a bigger look at economic development, and this is a very specific financing thing. So it's a financing tool. So it's similar to whether we're doing a tax initiative or we're doing any other type of assessment district for sidewalks or people like that. It, it can be really technical on the financing side, depending on how that money works. And so again, the financing side of it can be anywhere from a flat fee per parcel, flat fee per business owner, per square footage fee, you know, there's unfortunately, there's a lot you can do with an improvement district. But the really important piece is it has to be something that the people who would be contributing to it would buy into. And so I, my recommendation or what I would really like to see is to go out for RFP for a very specific consultant to just do that, to just engage the property owners and the businesses, because you can do both. You can have property owners pay into it and businesses or either or typically tenants, tenants or property owners. And so I think that has to be done really carefully because, you know, it is really hard to start a business, especially in the downtown area. And so there might be a better opportunity for property owners to start putting into that. That being said, the property owners then get to enjoy those monies. So again, whatever is paid into the district has to be spent in the district. So that's a big note about assessment districts is that if it is put in place, like say we do a downtown district, those monies have to go to that district. It cannot be used for anything outside of that district. And it cannot be used for anything that's not explicitly discussed within the district documents. So that's kind of a, a big overview to think about. I think my preference would be to give direction to city staff to bring it to, to go out to RFP and bring back a consultant and what that would cost us to do. I don't think an ad hoc committee is capable of doing that level of work.
I would be inclined to agree with you on that. I'm wondering though, is the ad hoc committee's purpose to determine if that needs to be done? If we need to, if we want to go in that route?
I mean, we've been tiptoeing around a, a business improvement district for a couple of years now, and I think that's what people want. I think, or at least want to explore, I should say. I, I don't speak on behalf of any property owners within the cities downtown. The other thing too is the district can be whatever you want it to be. So downtown, the definition. So the district does not have to be the same boundary as the Historic District. It can be larger. A good example of this is the Dunsmere Parks and Rec District is an assessment district for Parks and Recreation. So essentially you would be creating another district that would report to the city. They're, they typically have a governing body, like a committee that is assigned to the P bid or an executive director who represents it. Again, they can come in a lot of shapes and sizes. And then though, that's how that would happen. But for example, if you want your assessment district to pay for special events programming, like that money goes specifically to that. You can hire an executive director or the city can then contract that out to the chamber, and that's like another way of using those funds. But I'm not saying that's what is happening. A lot of it again has to come down to what does the district want? Because again, I am not in the district. I'm neither a business owner nor a property owner. So I think the biggest thing you have to do is you have to get at least 50% plus one or two thirds plus one on the same page to agree to something, and that's unfortunately not.
My, my intention with bringing it forward was not to you know, kind of like, I guess Juliana narrowed it down because I feel like that's the direction we probably should go. But just there's some moving parts that aren't quite settled yet. You know, particularly the P bid, right? And so hopefully we're trying, I'm trying to engage Civitas here, and they're, they're a company who does these type of things. And so I just want to have a, a meeting with them to discuss, you know, kind of a little more in depth on what their process is, how they work. But I'm completely open to, if you want to just dive into an RFP, then, I mean, it has been, we have talked about it for a while and there is interest, so I'm, we can work on taking care of that and moving that forward if that's what the council chooses.
Through the chair, the only other thing that I can think of is I'm not privy to what our EDVG grant parameters are with Cosmont. And if there is additional funding for them to assist with that type within the existing grant that we have. I'm not privy to that option, but that is technically another option is if we still have budget within the Economic Development Community grant, and if those funds are not frozen. And that could be another option that would reduce the amount of time having to go up for request for proposal. And it would already be someone who's also already very familiar with some of the pieces of the downtown area and some of the statistics. But it would, I, I think the biggest thing to understand is it would require us to spend a decent amount of money on someone who would be able to interface directly. That would be the only time that I think maybe having an ad hoc associated to assisting with that endeavor is that you then have two people who are specifically on the ground to go and conduct interviews with individuals or things like that, which can get very expensive when you have an outside consultant coming in.
Yeah, one of the things that I had a concern with was that it's not really Cosmont's expertise doing the, the bid process. So that was kind of, you know, why I didn't just outright come and say that because it's not really their role, right? You know, they, they're focused on recruiting and property, you know, like their, their roles are slightly different, you know? It's not, we couldn't do it, but I don't think that's their expertise. I guess that's where I'm at.
That's fair.
Right. And then I know one, I think too, he's not here tonight, unfortunately, but council member Brian has been making contact, I know with a lot of the property owners throughout the downtown and business areas. Trying to get trying to get their opinion on everything, talk to them. So it's unfortunate he's not able to be here tonight. And that is also one reason why I was hoping to move this to the next meeting. Given that he'll have that information on the property owners' opinions. Is there any other discussion?
Can before we move it to the next meeting or you consider tabling it to the next meeting? I, I may need a little more time than that. I, if we could, I would consider like the first one in March would give me a little more time just to be able to coordinate and make a few things happen before then.
Okay, so by then you'll be able to talk to the one agent or the one company and potentially have all information on.
Yes.
Everything goes. All right, cool. All right, with that, I move to table this to either the next meeting or the March, first meeting in March, depending on how exactly when that, when you have that knowledge. All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is possible approval of downtown revitalization initiative program and funding.
All right. All right. Sorry about that. So I brought this to the council in December 19th, 2024. They asked for some more clarification, kind of some more specifics. So I kind of went into a bunch of in each of those, I, categories. Outlining kind of more of the process and what the, you know, kind of the application process, what that looks like, how they're eligible. And I hope I didn't miss anything. I tried to, I think I accomplished, you know, most of it, but I kind of wanted your, your guys' take on, you know, how does it look? What is, you have any questions on the program? The dollar figures I'm requesting, I, I did not change. All I did was add in specifics on eligibility and for each of the three programs I'm proposing. And then also I did add in some, some of it associated with the housing element. And so, you know, that could be, that could be a required for a, you know, they may get that. If, if they're applying and they want to build a, build a, or revitalize, you know, apartments in downtown and how does that impact? You know, then we may allow for additional funding or something like that. So I'm open to some comments.
Okay. Questions?
Do have a question. I didn't see it in here, but how are we? How are we looking at eligibility of applicants in terms of if, are we going to be granting funding to individuals who are not in good standing with like code enforcement or taxes? Are they going to have to show that they have a clean bill of health on the property?
That would, that would be, I, that would be a good recommendation. I mean, that's something that we've discussed internally. I just did not, I guess I didn't think of adding it in there because I had that conversation about a month ago. But I'm, I could add that by, by all means. I mean, that's, you know, if they're not paying their bill now, what's going to make them eligible to pay this bill, right? So I agree.
Right. Any other questions? So I do have a few questions before we move into public comment. The first one is regarding, are you hoping to roll this out at the beginning of the next fiscal year? Or when is this? Sixty days from approval? Where was that?
Yeah, it's in the staff report or in the initial part of the proposal. On page 20. Page 20.
Applications will be available 60 days after approval of the program.
And then running through 2027? Okay. So the requested funding is spread out over the, this fiscal year, next fiscal year, basically over three or four fiscal years?
Yeah, and it might, I mean, if we're, I mean, to be honest, mayor and council, we're, you know, I mean, we're in February, you know, and with two council members not being there tonight, I don't, I was, I'm not expecting you to say, yes, let's go for it tonight. Because I'd really like to hear council member Brian's comments as well on this program, since he's not available for comment. But, because I think it's really important and, you know, 60 days from now, applications would come, you know, would be basically available May. And by the time people fill those out and get them back to us, you know, I mean, we'll have to, in that meantime, we'll have to establish, you know, who's going to approve them? Who are part of that approval process? Are we going to have just two council members, a staff member and one citizen member or something like that, similar to our CDBG loan committee that Quentin has established? And so, you know, we're really, our approval process is, I mean, most likely we're not going to see anything until June. And it's a reimbursement type program, so the money will come out of the prop, the following fiscal year. So I mean, once we give approval, they have to go do the work and they have to prove that they spent the money and then we reimburse them for it. Right? So it's not like we're giving any money upfront outside of the building permits and the planning process, right? So if there's, if it's in the Historic District and it's in the, it has to go through a site alteration permit, then essentially that's step one before you even get to building permit, right? And so step one is go through site alteration permit, and that's basically just, you know, it's, they're going to go through the planner and go through the process. So then all of a sudden, by the time that process closes out, we're 90 days down the road. So we're looking at fall. And then, and then they can go into those two, that and the permit could go simultaneously, but we won't issue a building permit until we know that site alteration has been approved, right? And so we're not even looking to expend any funds until sometime next fiscal year.
All right. One other thing that I wanted to just, or just bring up quickly here, and I can't remember if I brought this up last time we looked at this particular item. Or if, or if I have even really talked too much about this, but one thing I would really like to see coming down the pipeline here in the next month or two, specifically hoping to try to get it implemented this summer is a program to help facilitate some murals throughout downtown. Specifically with a few specific ideas relating to that. Is that something that could potentially be bundled into this or is that something that would be better done separately?
Um, I think from the standpoint of the Um, I think from the standpoint of the city, I think we, I would want to do it separately. You know, because I know, like, for example, the, the mural that's, you know, on the side of the wall there by Dunsmere Hotel, I mean, that one could use a refresh, you know? You know, like, yeah, there's been talk about wanting to do a mural on the north side of the library, right? Well, I, now it's falling, the facade is having some issues, so I need to go and fix that first with new stucco before I can do that. But I think that would be something that, you know, I would love to implement, but I think I would rather do that separately.
Um, okay.
From this process, because it wouldn't necessarily be business owner driven. I think it would be more um, city and chamber driven. Um, on what that looks like.
Alright, um, the other thing that I would just, the other question I have is, this has not, well, I'll save this for discussion. Um, so with that, I'll open this up to public comment. Uh, same rules as before, three minutes, thirty seconds. Uh, if you're on Zoom, please go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. Uh, and with that, uh, please, or we'll start off uh, with the individual in the room.
Really fifty-nine oh six Castle Avenue. I'm gonna start off with two words, gentification and brownstoning. You've already tagged nineteen buildings, eleven of which are in the historic district with fines and things to pay. I heard, I have known for some time that many of the processes that are coming down the pipeline refer to those two categories, gentification and brownstone. You've just made with your comments tonight, and if you go further with that, you've just made eleven business owners criminals, basically. They are brownstoned. I don't think this town is, was built on that. I don't think any gentification could, is needed in that. I think all businesses should be just equally uh, okay. Furthermore, it has just come to light that Humboldt County. Went through the Ninth Court of Appeals. You cannot tag a new owner for the ills of the previous owner. Many of our historic buildings and many of the buildings that are be, needing repair and needing these facades and needing repairs and need this funding are fall into that category. Many times the owners do not know, these liens are that are on the building for these nineteen, eleven, nineteen buildings that you've already discovered to go after. They're not on record, they don't come up on the relators. The third, the Ninth Court of Appeals has just ruled on this last week. I suggest you check that and not write into any gentification or brownstoning in this document.
Thank you. Alright, and I know David Hicks had his hand up, but I don't see it up anymore, yep. And then, so David, you've had your hand up for a while, so if you want to go next?
Thank you, uh, appreciate it, uh, Mr. Clarno. There. Is not a forever amount of time to get things done. Why can't you council members hold a couple of short interim, interim meetings on some of these things? That somebody wants to kick down the road, kick the can down the road on? It doesn't make any sense to me. What that sounds like is no effort, and I don't know that there's, that people aren't making effort, but. It doesn't seem like there's any energy toward getting things actually moving. So I'd like to suggest maybe that you guys come in for a couple of special meetings on these two agenda items tonight as soon as you can. And uh, make sure that um, everybody's on board with getting these things done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Ms. Luchewski, if you can, uh, you are up next.
Uh, yes, uh, just briefly about um, the, the comment of the person before me, I, I, I disagree. I do think gentrification is what is needed uh, for revitalization. Um, so, uh, on another note, um, thank you, David Hicks, uh, for, for agreeing with me. We need solid milestones, council, as to how we are going to identify progress here. Things are very frustrating and I'm not the only person that feels this way. We need to hold administration responsible. How are you gonna keep track if you want to see this in two months and this in two months? Are you gonna keep track of, uh, uh, on a Google calendar? Are you gonna set a task reminder in two months to check in on this and check in on that? Are you gonna put a post-it note on a wall and, and rip it off when the right calendar day comes? What is the system of accountability? It just seems like kicking the can down the road really makes for great job security. I'm not really too sure what we're doing here. Please don't be passive. Please open your eyes and set milestones. By this date, we want to see this amount of progress towards this goal. Please have a system of accountability here. It's, it's humiliating some of this to hear this over and over and over again. We've had the committees, we've reached out to this person, we've sent an email to this person. You know, to hear comments like, oh, I, I had that discussion a month ago and then another month passes. I, i- it's, it's frustrating. I, I really would like to see the downtown move forward in, and there's so much opportunity for improvement here. That even, you know, something small would make a difference. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, with that, we'll open this up for discussion.
Yeah, I don't mind the program going towards people who have code enforcement issues um, for the reimbursement based um, system. Um, I, you know, I brought that question up because that can sometimes be included in these and I wanted to make sure that maybe it wasn't. So I think I'm fine with that. I just, I want to make sure, you know, I think, I think there's a lot of triggers within the program. You know, where it is limited um, that individuals can't disproportionately take advantage of the program to address, you know. Really bad uh, code enforcement issues on a number of their buildings. Um, but I think that's part of, you know, this program is updating some of the facades that people may have gotten uh, code enforced on. Uh, that being said, uh, one of the amendments I would like to make to the program uh, is that our own buildings, the city owned buildings are disqualified from this program. At least for the, for the, the program itself. I don't want anybody to think that if we do work on the library building that it's coming out of this program. I don't want people to necessarily get those things misconstrued. So um, I'm fine adopting the program tonight, moving forward. Now is really the time that this program needs to get out and marketed, because people are starting to. Um, it's, it's getting earlier and earlier every year that people are starting to look at their summer projects, because there aren't a lot of tradespeople available. There aren't a lot of um, contractors able to, you know, get up and go when April, May rolls around anymore. A lot of people are planning now for these types of projects, so frankly, I would like to get the program running. Um, so that's my intent tonight, is to make that motion with the amendment that city owned buildings are not uh, able to apply for these programs.
The other thing, just touching on what you were saying, that I think is really important, is if there is a, something relating to code enforcement. Um, and then they're coming in, say it's a facade, an issue with the facade, and then they're going after the grant to fix that facade problem, you know, to help fix that facade problem. That definitely should not be excluded from the program now.
I don't think there's enough money within the program to even really address larger scale code enforcement issues, so.
Okay.
And we do have a application through CDBG for code enforcement assistance uh, for people who do need money to do that, like those who are on fixed income, uh, low income. That's a different thing.
The other reason I think, oh.
Oh, I just was gonna say, I agree that, I think I'm okay with adopting it and moving forward, because I think we need to kind of get things moving on it. Because people do start planning for their projects now for the summertime. Um, my only question is, is how do we market it? What's the plan for that?
Yeah, so my, my intent to market is, I'm, I'll work with Kate um, Claude there at the chamber. And we will put it out through the chamber network. We'll meet with uh, property owners and, and uh, building owners. Um, we can, we can do a direct mailing. Um, so basically what I'll, I'll do is I'll take this way it's proposed here. Um, add the modifications as recommended um, from it, specifically the city owned buildings. That, I mean, that was never my intent, um, because I would, that's not how I would spend the money. Um, that's, it, it's for the program, it's for non-city owned buildings and, and I just put it in there just to clarify. Um, but yeah, I would basically have this, I'll put it into a more condensed format and then we'll have it on the website. And we would uh, we'll uh, we'll push it forward um, through the chamber and probably have like a stakeholder question and answer meeting, maybe uh. Maybe towards the end of March, um, because I'll correct myself, I did say May, I meant actually April, I just miscounted a month. So the beginning of April would be available. Um, so, once, once the application is prepared, then we can have a question and answer kind of forum. Um, that would allow them to come in, ask questions and then um, we'll kind of work it that way.
One thing I would really like to see, speaking of finance committee, um, is if one of the items on the next finance committee agenda can kind of be the expected breakdown of how this will affect this year's budget, next year's, or then, and the following two-year budget, which goes, so. Then we're gonna be doing twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, so this will then run through that entire two-year budget cycle. So I would like to kind of see a breakdown of that next finance committee of how these costs are being split across the three fiscal years that they will affect. Um, I'm also okay with moving forward as long as we start jumping onto uh, that in the finance committee uh, as soon as possible.
Sure, uh, I can have that on, uh, if we have our meeting next week, I'll have it on that meeting.
Alright, um, yeah, I, I will also work towards pressuring the finance committee chair towards having a meeting either Monday or the following Monday.
And I will say through the chair, I, I am supportive of the public art programming. I've met with a couple of people about, you know, the Pine Street mural specifically, as well as creating other new pieces. Um, I just don't want to hold up this program right now.
Yeah.
And one of the things about this program is it can change. So if we do go through a full season and we're not seeing enough applicants, or we're seeing more in one category and not the others. But it is under the purview of the council to come back to the program and adjust as needed. So if we happen to get everybody coming this year for these types of applications, um, we, we can come back and take a look at it. Um, same thing too, if catastrophe happens and we have to pull back budget on this, we can always revisit it. Um, but I'm happy to make a motion to adopt the downtown revitalization initiative program with the amendment that city buildings are not eligible for this program. And I would like to uh. Allocate the requested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the program itself for funding and I would like to.
I have one more amendment I would like to suggest while you are making your motion.
And then um, I'd like to add an additional uh, not to exceed ten thousand dollar budget for marketing materials.
I also, one other just quick amendment here, um, is that I also feel that residences should be excluded. Uh, unless they are, your single family residences should be excluded from this program as well. Um, I, if say down at um.
On Sacramento?
Well, no, I was thinking like, obviously the uh, Renaro Building or um. Puffer Billy that have um, mixed use, more apartment style, I feel like they should be able to apply for this. But if there are any single family houses or residences, they should not be able to um, go through this.
I think the program is pretty succinct enough, you know, incentivizing housing element goals for density and low income. So I, I don't.
Well, oh, you are right, there is that in there.
I think, I think there's been a good intent on, I would not support that amendment, only because I think there was a good intent on this. Because I think the other thing to annotate is what if a single family house can be updated and brought online and then it goes to a low income family?
Fair enough.
Want to, you know, remove that opportunity for people. Um, and I think, and again, if we do happen to get a ton of single family housing, applying for the program, we can adjust it later. I just, I don't want to be too restricted at this point. I want to see what we're gonna get in the program.
Fair enough.
I think um, just to add to that, I believe we limited it to the historic district, so. Um, we have a, I believe there's a pretty limited number of housing um, in this historic district.
Housing for historic, because I do have the town center zoning designation.
For town center, yeah, I mean, it does, there's, I think there's a pretty limited factor in there, maybe, maybe two or three at the most, so.
Alright, alright, well then, suggestion withdrawn.
So, so uh, just for, just for the, the minutes, my, my current motion on the floor is a motion to adopt the downtown revitalization initiative program with the amendment that city owned buildings are not eligible for the program. And to approve the allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the program and an allocation not to exceed uh, ten thousand dollars for marketing material.
I second.
Alright, it is moved and seconded. Um, this is a budget item, so we'll need roll call.
Sorry about that, took me a minute to unmute. Council member Lucazi.
Aye.
Council member Hubbard.
Aye.
He's not voting, he's not.
Unfortunately, since you're, you have to abstain since you're not in the room.
Oh, right, right.
Sorry about that, and then council member Sebring, aye, and mayor Clarno.
Aye. Alright, passes. Alright, uh, with that, we'll move on to item number eleven, new business pre-agenda meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-five.
Mayor and council, so uh, in accordance with the council um, council protocols, we have a thing in there where we have our pre-agenda meetings. And I just kind of, we kind of got off track a little bit, and I just wanted to kind of lay out a new schedule and, and get that and see if there's any comments from the council. And get that going, so then it's not just me and the mayor making these discussions and moving agendas forward. But we could include all the rest of the council members as well, so. Um, you know, I know from time to time, people take vacations, so we just kind of laid it out in uh, alphabetical. It's the Wednesday prior to each council meeting at three PM. And the meetings, um, it's kind of what we determined worked best previously. Um, and then um, it's laid out by a council member by alphabetical by last name. Um, and so that's kind of how the calendar is laid out, so I hope you guys have the opportunity to review it and then uh. Just open to any comments or potential changes, uh, and then we can update that as such.
One other thing I'd like to add for the two new council members is these um, meetings do not, these are not hard times and dates. Uh, and meetings could potentially also be done over the phone via Zoom, things can be, times and dates can be moved around a little bit. They can't be moved too far unfortunately uh, in one direction or the other, just because the agenda for the meeting does have to be posted. Um, so far in advance of the meeting, and that's one reason why they are on for Wednesdays. Um, is just that that gives anything that needs to be added or researched uh, sufficient time to be added to the next meeting. But there is always the possibility that these times and dates can be moved around, so. Any questions?
No question.
Uh, it's also probably fine if they're moved around and traded a little bit per person. It's just, we do want to make sure that all council members get an opportunity to uh, join in on this and partake and kind of help set the agenda moving forward. Alright, uh, with those couple clarifications, uh, unless there's any questions, I will open this up for public comment. Alright, same rules as before, if you'd like to make a comment on this, please go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. Seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item. Any discussion?
I do have discussion. Um, one, I would like to keep the dates and times, because that's how we got rid of the pre-agenda meetings last time. So if we can keep dates and times, that would be great. On that topic, would Brandon or Sarah like to switch dates with me in September and October? Because I will be in a wedding and so I will most likely be flying. Because I will be in a wedding, and so I will most likely be flying out to the Midwest on the twenty-fourth. So if Brandon has the September tenth date and Sarah has the October eighth date, so if one of you would like to switch with me, I would, I would enjoy that. Otherwise, I'm going to let everyone know right now, I will not be able to make that date. I will most likely be in a plane.
I will switch with you.
Okay, cool.
That's fine.
Sweet. So that's a switch for October eighth and September twenty-fourth.
Okay, I got that.
Otherwise, I'll motion to approve the amended schedule of rotating attendance requirements for pre-agenda.
I don't think there's some, I don't think I have an action item, do I? I thought it was just for informational and discussion.
No, it says discussion and action item.
There's a motion.
Okay, yep, I did.
It's the person who has to attend all of the meetings. I will second this. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's been moved, seconded, and approved. All right, future agenda items. Obviously, on as soon as possible, we need item number A, return to the agenda.
Ten A. I would like to request that the city attorney's performance evaluation return at the next meeting as a closed session item, either before or after the meeting, preferentially after the meeting. That's a, that's just a request. I do not have a second. I just would like to get it.
Okay.
Done.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the shortest meeting yet.
In Stewart's words, should be seen shining through each other like blood through the natural skin. Once back in America, Stewart's eye seemed even able to probe beyond that natural skin.